They order the Gurnee Village Board Regular Meeting of January sixth, two thousand and twenty five. Roll call, please.
Thorsonson.
Here.
Woodside. Ross.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
O'Brien.
Present.
Ballmas.
Present.
Five present, one absent.
I'll stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Happy New Year, everybody. On to the first item on the agenda, Approval of Consent Agenda.
Second.
Motion by trustee Ballmas, second by trustee O'Brien. Roll call, please.
Thorsonson.
Yes.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Five aye.
Pat.
Ide number one, Approval of the Minutes in the December sixteenth, two thousand and twenty four meeting. Idee number two, Approval of Resolution two thousand and twenty five dash zero one, Establishing Certain Property of the Village of Gurnee to be Surplus Fire Engine thirteen twenty one. Idee number three, Approval of Public Works Department Request to Set a Bid Date of January twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five, for the Lift Station Control Panel Replacement Project for Lift Station Panels. Idee number four, Approval of Engineering Division Request to Set a Bid Date of February twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty five, for the Stony Island Regional Water Main Replacement Project. Idee number five, Approval of Payroll for Period Ending December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty four, in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-three thousand, forty-two dollars and fifty-three cents. Idee number six, Approval of Payroll for Period Ending December twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four, in the amount of one million, seventeen thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. Idee number seven, Approval of Bills for Period Ending January sixth, two thousand and twenty five, in the amount of one million, eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion by trustee Garner.
Second.
Second by trustee Ross. Roll call, please.
Thorsonson.
Yes.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Five aye.
Motion carries. No petitions and communications. And the report tonight, Presentation of Fiscal Year two thousand and twenty five, two thousand and twenty six, Proposed Capital Budget. Pat, you gonna start?
Yeah, so as we do every January, kind of kick off the formal budget process with a presentation of the proposed capital plan. So the copy of the multi-year capital plan was included in your packet. Tonight, Brian, myself, department heads are gonna run through each of our kind of respective areas. Again, this is just kind of the first step. The budget here, number one, excuse me, set in March. So plenty of time between now and March to receive feedback, any comments, concerns, questions that you have, work to get those incorporated. So Brian's gonna kick it off and then we'll run through the different systems.
All right, thank you, Pat. Just a little bit about where we're at in the process here. So the multi-year capital plan and multi-year financial forecast, along with the strategic plan are the three long-term planning elements. So we're still, still early in the annual budget process or the planning and reporting process for this cycle. The multi-year forecast is really the first step. That tells us what we can afford to do from a capital standpoint. That's internal. We look out five years in various funds and that lets us know, one, we can sustain operations and what we can, what we can use for capital. That flows into the multi-year capital plan, which identifies long-term strategy for capital, gives us an idea of what we're kind of in charge of or responsible for, and what the priorities are for the upcoming budget cycle. As Pat mentioned, this is kind of staff's first, first glance at or first, first brush at capital for the next budget cycle. Still plenty of time for input and changes as we go through the process. Just a little bit on the front end. The chart here shows you just the proposed fiscal year twenty six. Capital plan broken down by fund. As you can see, the capital improvement fund, so non-water and sewer, is the biggest one at fifty-four point nine percent, followed by water and sewer, fleet services, which channels all fleet with the exception of the fire, motor fuel tax, which is dedicated to streets, the police restricted revenue, and then the golf course. Kind of the funding strategy over the next five years here. Total capital plan for the five years is almost eighty million dollars. Historically and moving forward, we, we look at the capital plan primarily on a pay-as-you-go basis versus taking on debt. Home rule sales tax is a big part of that. As you know, half of that is dedicated to capital. We also have some restricted funds that we use, motor fuel tax, and then, and then the police restricted, as I mentioned. We have a big part of the capital funding formula historically for non-water and sewer capital, but more recently for water and sewer capital as well, is general fund excess balances in the general fund or surplus balances, we used to call it. In addition to that, in the water and sewer fund, that capital is funded by through rates. We also try to get grants whenever we can. Just did a look back since two thousand and twenty twenty. We've applied for almost ten million, received one point one of that, got rejected for seven, seven million, and we have one point seven million outstanding pending out there that we're still waiting on, on a response from. That doesn't include things like ARPA or FEMA money that we automatically get, you know, to us that we didn't have to proactively go out and ask for. Also looked at flexible financing, like the IAPA loan, that is still outstanding, about three million left on that. We did, we did use some financing for the fire station three when we did that, right in the middle of the pandemic, obviously. Got some great pricing there and were able to leverage that. Paid that off early, couple of years, and worked out well. Looking specifically at fiscal year twenty six, total capital plan, twenty point one million. The chart there shows you the breakdown by system. Transportation systems, largest at nine point four million, almost forty-seven percent, followed by water and sewer at five million or twenty-five percent. Vehicles and equipment, three point two million, about sixteen percent. Buildings and building improvements, just under two million, about ten percent. And then technology and stormwater management make up the remaining three and a half percent there. One of the things we, we like to talk about when it comes to capital, you know, it'd be great if we could have a fifty million dollar capital plan, but we have some limitations on, on things. One, you know, we still don't have the staffing capacity or the funding to be able to do it all at once. One of the other things we're talking about when we get, when we talk about limitations to the capital plan is supply chain has really been something we've struggled with lately. So I put together this chart, which shows various vehicles, squad cars, some, some public works trucks, ambulance and a fire engine, and it shows lead time to service in months. So you can see the blue is just how long it takes for the vehicle from the order to show up. And then the green is when it shows up to get it upfitted and then on the road. So you can see squad cars are ten months out, easy. Lot of public work stuff is year and a half, almost two years, and then you get to fire engines and ambulances. You can see the lead time on ordering it is pretty high, but once it gets here, we do all the upfitting and house, so it goes quick once we get it. But that's certainly one of the things we gotta keep in mind as we go. You'll see things getting, requests coming through for next budget year early, prepayment. Some of them we've done for fire engines, just to keep those things moving, to battle with that supply chain lead time. With that, I'll turn it over to Pat, who'll cover administration.
Sure. So administration, obviously, you know, this year, the big project was the Village L H V A C. So it's almost wrapped up. They've just got some small, outstanding items hanging out there. So got through that project successfully. Next year, put in a hundred and twenty-five thousand as it relates to the building. There's carpet in this building that's original to the building from nineteen ninety-two that's never been replaced, some paint. So just upkeep items like that. Gonna look to possibly partner with an interior designer for refresh of the building, possibly the following fiscal year, so not twenty-six, but twenty-seven. I'm not picking out colors and window coverings and all that stuff, so.
Thank God.
Yes, so. But again, that'll be a future project. Technology, twenty-five thousand for audiovisual items, such as just a projector here. Great for people sitting on that side of the room, not so great for people sitting on that side. So maybe some additional monitors in here to help on the public, the audience with presentations. Just maintain what we got here going forward. So we've talked about this for a couple of years. It's been hanging out there. You can see where the twenty-seven bar there shoots out the projected bittersweet irrigation system. That's the majority of that. It's estimated at three million dollars. We're working on figuring out a funding mechanism for that. We've taken the amusement tax from bittersweet and set that aside to go towards the eventual replacement of the system. Also, the course out there has some fund balance, so we're hoping that they can bring potentially a third of that cost to the table. We'll have to figure out the other two-thirds, but again, it is the village's property out there, so we're responsible for the maintenance. But again, that is in twenty-seven. So this coming year, we'll be planning that out, hopefully putting that out to bid, and then the following summer, get that under construction. And then Lama replacement in twenty-eight, again, that's just a placeholder. So Lama's our building permit software. It's functioning fine. It's doing its job. The biggest problem with Lama is that the company is only a handful of people, and if something happened to one of those people, we, there'd be an issue. So again, just wanna keep that on the radar as we go forward to make sure that we're prepared in case we see any inklings of issues with the provider, so.
Next is what we call administration or village-wide, and this is where the majority of the technology stuff falls into. I'll do my best to get through this, and hopefully it'll be understandable. Total technology spending for fiscal year twenty-six is just under three hundred thousand. Hundred and fifty-five is for network equipment. That's really like core network switching and routing items. Network segmentation, so that's really like control of, of network where, and where users can get into and can't. Incident response services under the cybersecurity, cybersecurity category, and then a bunch of firewall updates there. And then virtualization, this is server equipment, and then a, a big investment here in storage and tape drive updates to make sure we have backups to physical backups. So we have some redundancy built in there as we go. One of the things that Ryan, IT director, wanted me to mention is everything in here just includes the current environment, but he did wanna note that a lot of software and things are moving to the cloud, so what we're responsible for physically could change in the future. Just wanted to keep that, keep that in mind. Jeremy?
Okay, thank you. So for the police department, we're starting off with some several new vehicles with, includes five squad cars, new E T vehicle. We get a new E T vehicle every year. It's the one that's drove year-round. C S O vehicle, and then K nine vehicle, we're looking to get. That comes from the seizure funds. Additionally, our U T V is seventeen years old. It requires a lot of maintenance, so we're hoping to get that changed out this year. I know that the fleet manager would be happy if we could change that out, and so would we. Moving on down to the building, H VAC, we always keep money in there. The building's over twenty years old, so we're starting to see things go. The H VAC, everything's new, they're still original to the department, which includes the boilers and the air handlers. So any, we have annual maintenance on that, and then additional monies for any critical components that might come up. The Shakuritas Gatekeeper, that's kind of our big project for the year. We have money in that currently, in this current fiscal year, we have a hundred and fifty thousand, and then we're looking, hopefully, to get the same amount for the next fiscal year. That includes all of our entrances to the police department, along with everything from the Sallyport to release prisoner doors. That system that we currently have is that end-of-life, and so not only do we need to get a whole new system in place, but because of the consolidation efforts, it's gonna require additional components. Everything from previously when officers would pull up to the Sallyport, they would get on the radio, have the dispatcher open up the Sallyport door, they'd go in. This dispatcher closes it. That way, a prisoner can't get out and open or close the door. We're no longer gonna have that luxury come consolidation time, so we need to have things in place where an officer pulling up has some type of kiosk or something where he can swipe a card, it opens the Sallyport door. Similar to the cells, being able to open those with some type of two-factor authentication. Previously, it was communications. Now we have to look for something for us. So we're starting that this year. We're hoping to have that finished next year, but that's gonna be a pretty big project for us. The evidence locker upgrades, that is, right now, the officers, we, we have our standard evidence pass-through capability where an officer comes in with evidence. He, he opens up a door, he puts it in, closes it, it locks. The evidence manager opens it from the other side to get the evidence out. But we also have temporary storage where officers will come in and they'll put evidence in a temporary storage locker while they're working on stuff, collecting stuff, and it can stay in there for days to weeks at a time till they have it completed and put it into permanent. Our temporary lockers right now are more like gym lockers, so they're not, they're gym lockers with a lock. They're not the best that we could have, not that we need the best, but we need to update just to, to be on par with the standards right now for evidence keeping. Along with that, we have a, a regular refrigerator that we have a lock on that we keep DNA evidence in. So just to be on par with best practices, we're looking to get an evidence refrigerator, which has four different slots in it where officers throughout the day can put in evidence that needs to stay, cold evidence, as you will, DNA and other things can actually go into there, and that will put us online with best practices. Community room and building interior upgrades. Obviously, the building's over twenty years old. Community room itself has over three hundred active reservations a year from the community, so it's probably one of the most used rooms in the community for the public coming in. So we're, we just got done painting it, and now we're looking to hopefully get some new flooring in there, along with the investigations corridor where the flooring's coming up. So a refresh with a couple of different parts of the building. We're looking at like a multi-year plan where we can do part of it this year and part of it next year, with both painting and the carpeting. And then the fuel islands, we're sharing that cost with Fire Department and Public Works to go in on that. Building improvements and upgrades for the following fiscal year. We're looking at, the roof is over twenty years old. We're getting leaks here and there, so we're, we're trying to nurse that along as long as we can. Along with, we're looking at different ways for long-term storage. We're working with Public Works to see if there's a solution there. Right now, when we get a homicide vehicle, we, we have four homicide vehicles we currently have that are kind of in long-term storage forever. So we can either pay McClures or Lake County Towing to store that vehicle for us until the case is over with appeals twenty years down the road, or we can find a place right now where we can store them. We have two of them right now that are in one of our Sallyports at the police department, so that blocks out that Sallyport for the last ten years. We haven't been able to use it. So we're looking at something as far as possibly even storage containers that are secure in the public works area where we could put cars in there and large items and, and store them securely for long-term court cases and things like that. So we're working with them with that. And then with the policing twenty-first, in the twenty-first century, it's gonna be all about technology. We're gonna be dealing, well, we are dealing with things, everything from A I-generated videos to fake messages. So to be able to stay ahead of that, we have to keep looking at technology where we can decipher that and combat it. So that's what we're looking for. Pass it on to Fire Department.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Good evening. Start with kind of the same theme with the vehicles. The two vehicles you see there were actually ordered in, these ambulances were both. One was ordered in twenty-two, the other one was ordered, ordered in twenty-three. We believe we'll get one in May of this year, and then we're hoping October. So that's that lead time you saw with the thirty months. So we've been waiting for those quite a while, but those two ambulance will be paid for out of this year's budget. You approved them quite a while ago, so we thank you for that. Cardiac monitors, it's really a bad name now. Back when I started, a monitor was something you hooked on someone's chest and you looked at the heart, and that's all you did. The devices have changed, the whole technology, they now are diagnostic machines that do everything from reading the oxys, oxygen saturation in someone's blood. They do waveform c echnography, which means they actually watch someone breathing and they can tell you how that looks. They take the blood pressures. The best part of them, these new technology, they integrate right into the reports now. So we don't have the errors when we're data inputting numbers and moving things back and forth. The cardiac monitor is able to talk and communicate back and forth. When I started, we were using Life Pack fives. These are Life Pack thirty-fives. So bit of an upgrade. It would be huge. Currently, we're using what's called a Life Pack fifteen. So we kind of skipped one technology, and it's time to get up to the next level of technology. We'd be looking at purchasing six of these, placing one in each of our frontline ambulances. On the engines, we would go back to what are monitoring capable A E Ds, which meet the state of Illinois standards, I D P H, for A L S engines. That'll help us. Currently, we carry full monitors on both engines and ambulances. We're kind of looking to upgrade the one, maybe downgrade the other one to kind of meet in the middle from a budget standpoint. As far as our buildings go, this year, we're meeting with architects to figure out how to take the nineteen ninety-five building, Fire Station Two, and get the bunk rooms up to par with the other two. Station Three, we did a nice job giving the independent sleeping quarters. At Station One, we were able to figure out a way to get those to be independent. It's time for Station Two. It's still an open-air bunker room. As we deal with different viruses, just the health and wellness of firefighters getting a little better night's sleep if they're in their own independent rooms, we're working the architect. We're looking at doing that next budget year, getting those upgraded. Along with that, Station One is now forty-five years old. So the ongoing maintenance on that, we were talking before the meeting, Brian and I, about the boiler there. It, it's working. It still runs. It seems to work. There's about two of us in the building that know how to run it. But it's reliable, but we have to keep some money in the budget just in case on a lot of these items in that building. Next technology, we're looking at the potential, some station alerting, kind of along the lines with the police department, as we move to a new dispatch center. We're looking at how that's going to play back and forth. The other thing that we're looking at is our outdoor warning sirens. And the technology it's going to take to make sure they're still supported. All, all the municipalities that are joining this joint dispatch center are all looking at the same thing. So we're gonna find a solution that works. There's some different options we can maybe do to our, our warning sirens to bring them in line with everyone else, or as I'm pushing heavy in committee meetings, everyone can come to our technology. So we'll see which one wins on that. But we made sure we have some money there, so we're able to keep those in place 'cause we understand the importance of making sure we alert everyone and we're able to test and track those throughout the year. Beyond this budget year, we'll actually be coming with these next two items. The ambulance for fiscal year twenty-six and the fire engine for fiscal year twenty-seven. We'll probably be coming in the next month or two with those before you. That's why I wanna talk about them tonight. They fall right in line with our apparatus replacement program. Getting this ordered now, thirty months out for the ambulance, getting that engine ordered, you know, we're, we're out thirty-six months. I think it's actually twenty-four and thirty. I misspoke. Twenty-four months for the ambulance, thirty months for the fire engine. So if we get them placed now, they will be delivered during fiscal year twenty-six and fiscal year twenty-seven. So that'll be coming. We'll have some M O's and some more stuff for you in the next couple of months on those. But that's part of our long-term capital plan, keeping up with our vehicles. The next year, beyond this year's budget, we're looking at refreshing Station Two Community Room and Front Office Area. This was built with a awkward open-floor concept in the nineties. As we have offices out there, people are on phones, talking, the communication really is difficult in that area with the open air. It, it doesn't work well. We're looking into that. We're, we're able to use the architect that's onsite right now, looking at the bunks. We have them looking at this project as well. We may actually try to tie these over two budget years, try to finish the one up in April and kind of keep the next project going. That way, we can get a cost savings, run those parallel with each other versus trying to run two completely independent projects. We see some cost savings there, so we're, we're looking at drawings in that and trying to come up with a plan. Last one is Fire Station One with a forty-five-year-old building, the brickwork on this. We actually had it tuck-pointed when I became the deputy chief in two thousand and seven, and that was the last time anyone's touched the bricks. It's amazing how much wear and tear the bricks, especially up on the training tower and the hose tower, the wear and tear on that. So we definitely need to get someone out there and re-tuck-point this building in the next couple of years again. It's a brick building. It's a good building. It's gonna last forever as long as we maintain it and keep, you know, doing the maintenance on it. So those are the items we're looking for for the next couple of years. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. All right, I'll speak on public works and vehicles and building improvements. So this next year includes a lot of vehicles and equipment that are approaching end-of-life, which also conveniently gives us the opportunity to make sure what we've used in the past is still what we need going forward, to make sure that it still fits our needs. So included in this current fiscal year is one one-ton replacement that was deferred from last year. If you recall, we had catastrophic engine failure on our chippers. We had to trade a vehicle to pay for that. So that's the vehicle listed here. We're also looking to purchase three five-yard chassis only, so not the upfitting. The reason behind this is so that we can get them before the new emission standards. That'll increase the cost of each of these chassis around two thousand and twenty-seven. Some of those increases in the different forums can be speculated upwards of fifty thousand dollars per vehicle, so we're trying to avoid that. We're also looking to replace our crane truck. This is used to lift heavier equipment out on projects like our fire hydrants when they're placed in the ground. It also serves as a backup to our main brake truck in case that's ever down or out of service for any reason or in the event that there's multiple main brakes in different locations. Additionally, we have the three pickup trucks, which are kind of like the workhorse trucks that everybody drives around all the time. Our small bucket truck is also up for replacement. If you recall, we did the larger one last year, and that was for our forestry division. And so now we have the smaller bucket truck, which is used more for smaller streetlights, hanging the banners, putting up the holiday lights, and acts as the main work truck for the lights and signs crew. Also, as it comes up for our cement trailer, this is something where the guys have worked out of it for a very long time, and it's served its purpose. However, now that it's up for being replaced, what would be better? Well, it'd be better if we could fit an entire piece of lumber into it. It'd be better if it was tall enough that we didn't have to hunch over when we're pulling stuff out of it. So little things like that, we're trying to make the way that we work more efficient for our staff. Additionally, we have the, the forklift truck, so that's needing replacement. Everybody uses that whenever anything is dropped off at Public Works or even when we help out with other departments. And the hot box trailer. So this is something that we actually borrow from Waukegan Township. We have an intergovernmental agreement with them. They essentially bought it and never used it, and we entered into agreement a long time ago, and we've exclusively had it, and they've never asked for it back. So now it's gotten to the point where it sits inside the back of a one-ton in order to be used, which then takes a truck out of service essentially, like during snow season, which is when you're doing your pothole patching. So what the guys have asked for is to have a trailer instead, so it can just be attached to the truck that could still have the salt in, in it, leaving us better prepared for the snow events. Beyond that, moving to building improvements, we're currently in design for the new fuel island, which has been mentioned that we're splitting. We anticipate being able to go out for bid in the spring so that we can have construction in the summer when there's fewer buses and obviously no snowplows driving through the fuel island all hours.
All right, I'll speak on public works and vehicles and building improvements. So this next year includes a lot of vehicles and equipment that are approaching end of life, which also conveniently gives us the opportunity to make sure what we've used in the past is still what we need going forward, to make sure that it still fits our needs. So included in this current fiscal year is one one-ton replacement that was deferred from last year. If you recall, we had catastrophic engine failure on our chippers, we had to trade a vehicle to pay for that, so that's the vehicle listed here. We're also looking to purchase three five-yard chassis only, so not the upfitting. The reason behind this is so that we can get them before the new emission standards that'll increase the cost of each of these chassis around 2027. Some of those increases in the different forums can be speculated upwards of $50,000 per vehicle, so we're trying to avoid that. We're also looking to replace our crane truck. This is used to lift heavier equipment out on projects like our fire hydrants when they're placed in the ground. It also serves as a backup to our main brake truck in case that's ever down or out of service for any reason, or in the event that there's multiple main brakes in different locations. Additionally, we have the three pickup trucks, which are kind of like the workhorse trucks that everybody drives around all the time. Our small bucket truck is also up for replacement. If you recall, we did the larger one last year, and that was for our forestry division. And so now we have the smaller bucket truck, which is used more for smaller streetlights, hanging the banners, putting up the holiday lights, and acts as the main work truck for the lights and signs crew. Also, as it comes up for our cement trailer, this is something where the guys have worked out of it for a very long time, and it's served its purpose. However, now that it's up for being replaced, what would be better? Well, it'd be better if we could fit an entire piece of lumber into it. It'd be better if it was tall enough that we didn't have to hunch over when we're pulling stuff out of it. So little things like that, we're trying to make the way that we work more efficient for our staff. Additionally, we have the forklift truck, so that's needing replacement. Everybody uses that whenever anything is dropped off at Public Works, or even when we help out with other departments. And the hot box trailer. So this is something that we actually borrow from Waukegan Township. We have an intergovernmental agreement with them. They essentially bought it and never used it, and we entered into agreement a long time ago, and we've exclusively had it and they've never asked for it back. So now it's gotten to the point where it sits inside the back of a one-ton in order to be used, which then takes a truck out of service essentially, like during snow season, which is when you're doing your pothole patching. So what the guys have asked for is to have a trailer instead, so it can just be attached to the truck that could still have the salt in it, leaving us better prepared for the snow events. Beyond that, moving to building improvements, we're currently in design for the new Fuel Island, which has been mentioned that we're splitting. We anticipate being able to go out for bid in the spring so that we can have construction in the summer when there's fewer buses and obviously no snowplows driving through the Fuel Island all hours. Our current fuel provider should be able to put a tank on site that would help us be able to have fuel in the interim, so it's not like we'd have to go elsewhere. At least, that's our current plan. We continue to add backup power generators at our critical facilities, so this is no different. We have two listed here, one for Route 21 and one for West Gate Lift Station. And we have trench drains being replaced, proposed in the, so previously, we did the main building, I know I was before you a couple of years ago doing that. Tom did the south building prior to that, and now we are looking at the fleet division. So where all the vehicles come in and out, they've noticed some backup of water, we've tried to rot it, we figure it's time for those to be replaced as well. Additionally, we have HVAC upgrades, as everyone's kind of talked about, as things get older, we've been proactively going after our larger units, like the makeup air units and things like that, and now we have some smaller units that are in need of replacement. And let's see, painting, replacing doors, garage door replacements or repairs, because those tend to go out somewhat frequently. Lunchroom upgrades to make sure that the guys feel comfortable when they're coming in to eat. I hope to get a stove at some point in time, we talk about that in joke. And then future building needs, continuing to maintain the facility going forward for the new needs, as well as evaluating options to maximize our storage as demands increase. We have larger vehicles, we have more equipment that helps us do our job better, but we need to keep them under roof, and so becoming more, I guess, creative about how we get that all in the space that we have since we are in the floodplain. And that's all I got.
Thanks, Heather.
I will move into some of the more capital projects that we're looking at for this year and future years. This year, we're pleased to present a transportation program of just shy of $9.5 million. Just shy of $6.5 million of that is for our annual resurfacing program at a distance of about seven, just shy of seven and a half miles of resurfacing roads throughout the village. Additional $1 million slated for reconstruction project. We'll dig into all of these numbers and where, and how we're going to be spending those in the next few slides. $820,000 in engineering consultants to supplement our in-house staff. We're proposing $800,000 in sidewalk repairs and extensions, and then $110,000 in streetlight wire, doing some repairs on some of our existing systems that we have in the community. So looking back historically, the first slide we have is our 2020 pavement condition index. So going to kind of walk you through some of the progress that we've seen over the last few years based upon some solid funding levels. So 2020, and it's a little bit hard to see on the screen, but the 2020, the average overall rating of our streets was 61. So that's kind of our benchmark that we're using for tonight. Lots of purples and reds, reds indicate failing streets, purples are near failing streets. So you see on the west side of town where things are newer, yellows and greens, which are in better condition, east and central, you know, the purples and reds, which are getting a little bit more age on them. So moving on to the next slide moves us to our 2022 PCI rating. So we do an actual physical rating of the streets once every three years. So 2022 was the last time that we actually had the trucks go by and take pictures of all the cracks in the roads. And as you can see on, in 2022, the average PCI rating was a 63, so a notch or two higher than what we had in 2020. Still see, you know, same general trends, you know, the older east side of town, still lots of reds and purples over there, but overall rating, you know, we've improved a couple of points. So moving on to the next slide, which is a 2024, so this is this year, this one is an estimated one. We've used, we have some software that we use to kind of estimate, you know, the decline of the streets versus what we've added in and what we've repaired over the last couple of years. So you can see this one's improved to an overall average rating of 65. So once again, making some good steps forward in the overall condition of all of our streets throughout the village. And then moving on to the next slide will be the projects that we have on a village-wide basis for this coming fiscal year. See, we've got projects, east, west, south, north, you know, throughout the village, and then on the next couple of slides, we'll dig into those a little bit more. So the first one is our east area of town, primarily the northeast area of town. Streets that we are proposing to hit are Highland, Johns Mansville, Grove, Pine Grove, Woodlawn, Hawthorne, Briar. In addition, the little horseshoe just north of 41 with Glenflora, Ferndale, and, I can't read the last one. Blackstone.
Blackburn.
Blackburn, sorry. So we're going to be doing a water main replacement in there as well as reconstructing the streets in that area. So the $1 million is primarily reconstructing those streets just in that little horseshoe. So three tenths of a mile costs you about a million dollars for that project. Moving on to the next slide, for our southeast portion of town, you'll see several streets immediately south of Grand Avenue, and then in the Providence Village subdivision, we're tackling Long Hill Road, part of Kingsway West and part of Middle Road. The ones that are kind of clustered around Stony Island in the center of the screen there, those are once again, as a result of some water main replacement work that we are proposing in that area. So those will be, you know, we'll hit the water main first, then come back shortly thereafter and get the streets put back together in good shape. So Zone 3 is more of our northern portion of the village, so part of Westfield, Medina Court, Packard, Barnwood Drive, Winona, Wassau, Portage, and Pembroke Court in the Pembroke subdivision. So that's kind of our central north. And then finally, our west division for our next slide, we're doing Olive Washington Park and then Corbel Drive in the Elysian Fields subdivision. And then finally, in the far south, in the Heather Ridge area, we're going to be doing Colby Road and Manchester Drive. So that's what, seven and a half miles and the $6 million, $6.4 million will get you as far as the road resurfacing. As a reminder, the majority of it is out of capital funds, the motor fuel tax is being spent out of here. On average, our motor fuel tax funds about a quarter of what we need to pave every year. So the other 75% comes out of our general fund dollars.
If I could just add real quick to that, David, especially on the slide where we went from the PCI in 2020 to 2024, like, all that was during the pandemic, and a lot of that funding came from general fund surplus. So when we talk about, when we get to the budget, we talk about the importance of being conservative and being able to walk through those things, to be able to have that, that's really what the outcome of that is, be able to do that. So it's really important that that stuff is there, and we continue with that philosophy.
Yeah, generally with our 20-year life cycle, which is, you know, fairly average for asphalt pavements, you know, that's 5% of our roadway network every year that we should be hitting. We've been a little bit better than that these last few years, so therefore, we're seeing that gain in the PCI as a result of that. Go on to the next one. So our sidewalk improvement plan that we've got proposed for this year is an expansion or a connection in Heather Ridge near the intersection of Gauges Lake and 21. As part of this, we're going to propose modifying the traffic signals to get across 21 to Lake Karina on the east side and to the pedestrian facility that runs up and down 21. As you can see, it's kind of got a little bit of a horseshoe or a circuitous route. We have to do that in order to meet some of the grade challenges as you're coming down Gauges Lake Road down to 21. So that's kind of the preferred alternative that we have at this point. We've worked closely with Heather Ridge's Umbrella Association to make sure they're on board with that, and that's the current plan for handling that pedestrian facility. Public Works on an annual basis does a sidewalk evaluation. This year, we're tackling Zone 1, which is kind of the central north area of the village. So Heather's, and Heather's crew is going to be doing the primary amount of work with some consultant help. And then on the next one, so this is looking more as our utility side, water and sewer construction projects. For this current fiscal year proposed, we have about $5 million in water and sewer projects proposed, $3.5 million in water main replacements, $637,000 in SCADA upgrades, $0.5 million in a sanitary sewer extension, and then $101,000 in intergovernmental, which is our contributions towards the Hunt Club in Washington project. Looking forward to the future and what we've got in stock for us, possibly increasing the amount of water main that we're replacing each year, and then meter replacements are built into the future years as well as part of the program. So we'll get into more of those as we dig through the slides. So this year's project, as we mentioned earlier, the reconstruction of Blackburn, Glenflora, and Ferndale, that's some of the original water main from the village's system that was built in the early 60s, is all cast iron. So we're on a program to try to get rid of and replace as much of that cast iron system as possible as it's reaching the end of its useful life. Stony Island, that's in the lower right portion, is another area of cast iron water main concentration that we'll be replacing this year. And then the green area on the left side of the slide, Quality Acres, this is the area that's kind of between Northridge Drive and the Six Flags parking lot. That's one of the few areas of town that does not have access to sanitary sewer. So we will be extending sanitary sewers to those three cul-de-sacs in that area of town so that if and when their septic fields do fail, that they have access to public sanitary sewers to remedy that situation. So now the scary slide. So looking at water mains and useful life, anticipated life of water mains. So we used 60 years as for cast iron and 75 years for ductile iron and PVC, and 100 years for the concrete pipe that we have in our system. With the main growth of our systems in the late 80s, early 90s, the majority of those materials being PVC and ductile iron pipe, they're all going to hit about the same time as far as, you know, end of useful life. So you can see over the next three, three and a half decades, we are pretty moderate in the amount of replacement that we have to do to, you know, maintain our system in a good fashion. However, there is a bit of a cliff coming in the future. So on the next slide, we're just kind of highlighting, you know, 46% of the water main that's currently owned and maintained by the village gurney was built between 1987 and 1997. So when you build it all at the same time, it all kind of falls apart at the same time. So that's something we're trying to plan out ahead. I won't be around most likely when this happens, but we want to make sure that the village is well-prepared for this in the future. So looking at the next slide, the next three decades, we'll only need to replace about 20 miles of water main according to the theoretical end of life for the water main that we've got in place. So this is not too scary, but knowing what we've got on the horizon is a little bit more to worry about. The next slide, so if we try, go through and try to normalize as best as possible and so that we take down that, we're shaving the peak for what it is, this is kind of what we are looking at, you know, doing a little bit more proactively now, and then still have some fairly healthy water main replacements during those two decades in the middle, but definitely a much more manageable process than what we're looking at right now without doing anything.
If I could real quick.
The final slide is kind of overlaying the two.
David, if I could real quick, just add, just for a little bit of context, those decades there, where you see 20 miles, 20 miles, 20 miles, the funding there would be between four and five million annually, and right now, we're about two to two and a half, depending on how much we transfer from general fund. So we're doing about half of what we could do to smooth that, to smooth that spike there. Sorry.
Thank you, Brian. Always appreciate the help. So then normalizing this, you know, the two graphs laid over each other, you can see, you know, the impact more closer to where we are right now versus these more severe impact, you know, 40, 50 years down the road from where we are right now. So that's kind of what we're trying to look for, as best as we possibly can prepare for those issues now. And then on that same vein, looking at the next slide, this is the locations of all of our cast iron water mains that we still have in the village at present. So these are, you know, built as part of the original system, that was the technology at the time. Cast iron is a good material, however, it does have a 60-year useful life. We're seeing in certain areas, we're at 60 years old, and it's becoming problematic, reliability, frakes, you know, regular break history, so we're kind of hitting those, the worst offenders at, as we have funds available. Next slide, you can kind of see a couple of the areas that we are proposing for this year and then for next year, to take a good chunk of those out of the mix and get those back in place with PVC pipe or HDPE or some of the other products that we've got that are a little more long-term resilient and work better in the soils that we have here in town. Okay, next slide, and then this one, let's see, this one overlays the, let's see, so it's the road conditions on top of the water main. So you can see that many of the water mains that we're needing to replace, the roads that are there are in poor condition that we need to be fixed as well. So we're going to hit them with a one-two punch and get the water mains replaced before we do the roads. Okay, moving on from streets and utility to stormwater projects. At present, we have $200,000 programmed for this year in stormwater management, $75,000 slated for the Grove Avenue project, $75,000 in general drainage improvements, and $50,000 in floodplain acquisition. And if you'll go on to the next slide, so the Grove project is, between Grove and 41, we have a restriction in flow in that area that's causing some issues to the properties on the north side of Grove Avenue there. We're going to be doing some reditching. We are talking to the property owner, there's a little bridge between the two commercial properties on Grove there that we're talking to them about either removing or upsizing the opening so that we can get more water through there, because that is a restriction point as well, and then regrading everything downstream so that we can get more flow through there and hopefully alleviate some of the backing up and some of the flooding problems that we're having on the north side of Grove. So going through permitting with Stormwater Management and Army Corps of Engineers at this point. And that is all I have.
All right, David.
Just before we finish up here, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the forecast and how the capital plan, what you have in that document, impacts fund balances and things like that as we go through in the general fund and the water and sewer fund in particular. So looking, when we forecast general fund, forecast five years out, we first start with expenditures, which is the block you see here. We look at major expenditures in detail, so each one of these has a detailed set of assumptions behind it, makes up 75% of all general fund expenditures, so we cover almost everything. Salaries, health insurance, pensions, work comp liability insurance. Couple assumptions we did put in here was a partial communications change with the joint dispatch model coming on and including that first-year share. What we did, what I don't have in the model is transfers to capital in any of the out years. We do have the $4 million transfer at the end of this year, that I'll show in a little bit, but nothing in the out years, because if we don't have it, we won't transfer it. So you'll see a little bit on that when I get to another slide here. So you take those expenditures, you add to it major revenues, again, we look at major revenues, ton of assumptions go into it, covers 70% of all general fund revenues. The blue bars you see there is the major revenues, the greens, everything else. We forecast that with three models, kind of the baseline, historical average, what it looks like going into recession and what it looks like coming out of recession or economic downturn. They don't always technically end in a recession or qualify as a recession, but downturns and upswings. Add to that, to the model, the upper and lower limits for fund balance, so this is 65% of expenditures, less transfers, lower limit being 60. And then add the baseline model in there for fund balance. So that blue line will show you what fund balance will do based on historical revenue growth and expenditures. Then we add the other two models in there, the green line being the expansion model, and then the red line being the contraction model. Again, as I mentioned before, in fiscal year '25, which is the two shaded bars there is the '25 estimate and the '26 projected, that includes. That includes the $4 million fund balance transfer at the end of this year, but nothing moving forward. So as you can see, baseline model, we dip below our fund balance a couple of years out. We talked earlier about the importance of conservative budgeting. Historically, what conservative budgeting conservatively has gotten us in a normal year with no extraordinary things, this, that's what it looks like. So that shows you the importance of, again, being conservative, only budget, giving us that extra cushion if something happens to revenues. As you can see in this one, the baseline model doesn't even hit the upper level of the projection until the very end. So again, a huge portion of capital funding is excess general fund balance, once we make sure we can pay for police, fire, and regular services. Do the same thing in the water fund. Forecast the capital plan, I included in here the continued accelerated IEPA loan payments, so paying that off in 10 years instead of 20. And I also included a $5 million annual water main assumption. So this is the model that David had up there that we were only doing two and a half a year. I assumed the smoothing part of that. So if we try to do 5 million, that's the, the blue bars is the revenue side, including the 6% rate increase. We talked about that last year as a forecast factor. Again, I didn't assume any general fund transfers. Cash reserve target here of about 33% of revenue, so keep a third on hand. And if, when we add the expenditures in there with the $5 million of water main that we're not currently doing, you can see that gets negative pretty quickly. So if we wanted to smooth that, the whole point of this slide is if we wanted to do something to smooth that, we need to look for funding that piece. General fund balances aren't going to make up that, that much that consistently. So we got about a two and a half, 2.4, two and a half million dollar hole that we want to fill if we want to do that water main side. I had this slide in here last year, shows where we are from a water rate standpoint with the other Jawa communities, just a 10,000 gallon bimonthly bill here. As you can see, we're on the low end, with the exception of Vollo, who subsidizes it through property taxes. Current, the current gurney rate, 68.84, it's about the bill that would be for 10,000 gallons, just the water piece. If we did 6% on here, and again, we're not making that, not making that recommendation tonight, that's something we'll do with the budget. We're still looking at ways to kind of ease that, ease that increase. It would put us at 72, almost 73. If we stayed with 6% increases through 2030, which is what the forecast, what the forecast has assumed in there, it would put us mid-pack with all the other communities doing absolutely nothing. So they would have to stay where they're at. We'd still be mid-pack in five years if we did 6% a year. So good bargain on the water side for, for the residents. One note in here is Jawa is increasing their rate 5% for the next five years. They had already approved that, so we know that's coming. So just summarize here, oh, and kind of one slide. So the plan doesn't include any new debt, meets our fund balance policies, at least for the next year. Obviously with the water, you know, it depends on what we do there. I think we've stressed the importance of the capital contribution from the general fund and conservative budgeting. We talked about the water rate adjustment. Again, we're not making any, any kind of proposals tonight. We're still working on, on seeing what we can do there. Really the direction we're looking for is just feedback on the plan and then proposed contribution from the general fund for, it'll end up being fiscal year '27's capital plan, $2 million to the capital fund and $2 million to the water and sewer fund. That will do that with the budget when we approve the budget in April. I think that's it. Happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Brian. I'll look to my left here. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, just, what do we have to, what have we been budgeting or paying for in anticipation of new vehicles that are 30 months, 24? I mean, what do we have to pay up now?
Right now, we're just, when we do the contracts, what you've approved is the cost. We're bidding them out, today's dollars they're giving them. The only thing that's in the memos as they secure the chassis from the third-party chassis builder, mostly with the Amelons, we would have to pay the difference of an increase on the chassis price. The one that they're building right now, that'll be in May, that one, we're finalizing the paint, there is no increase. The amount you approved is the amount it's going to cost us. The next one, that'll be in October, we will sign off on that one probably May, June. We'll find out if there's a chassis increase. Otherwise, there is no increase. We're paying what the quoted price was that you approved two, three years ago. No different than when I come before you in the next month or two with the next Amelons, next engine, I will be giving you the price, what they're charging us 30 months from now. On the engine, it stays, it stays flat because they are the builder. The Amelons, the box is built, it's placed on a Ford chassis. They won't take the risk of the Ford chassis price increase. We've been fortunate, like I said, these last two, we haven't. We will be able to, within that memo, give you kind of what the fluctuation we feel could be in there. So far, we haven't had that happen to us, but that is the contract that we're signing, is that they could increase the chassis price, but the box will not cost us anymore.
So we're paying for it one week contract?
We actually have not prepaid anything, correct? I know. Brian spoke to, a few years ago, we did a great job. We prepaid for an engine, the one that we're about to get right now. We prepaid it at $695,000. Right now, those are about 1.2 million. So we are being delivered here in the next month, actually, they're going to pick up on the 14th. The half-price engine, that's exactly the same as the 1.2 million engine because we prepaid that years ago and that was as built. If we could ever work a deal, I think Brian and I, back when we talked about that, we knew it was a good deal when they were signing it with us, when we took advantage. We don't believe we're going to be offered a prepaid.
Yeah, I mean, the fire department's the only department that's ever been able to lock in pricing on their vehicles, the Public Works, police, no one else has been afforded that.
Yeah, we can't lock in pricing for anything until we place an order, and we don't place an order without your approval. So we can't, when we budget, we try to anticipate an increase, and we've been trying to guess that, and sometimes we would guess 5% and then it'd be 20, or we'd guess 10% and then it'd be 15. So we do our best to try and estimate, but when we come to you, we come to you with the actual cost. And then if there's changes because upfitting things, we wanted to change a little bit here or there, then when we come with the bill, we'll indicate that it's different and why.
And the box, the box vehicle, do we have to replace that with-
Oh, the, the one, the main brake truck that looks like a bread box?
The one that, Waukegan?
Oh, the hot box, yes.
The hot box.
We do not, we don't own it, so they keep it and refresh, what was, what was your question exactly about that?
Well, you said it was that it's-
Do we have to buy them a new one?
We don't have-
No.
No, we don't have to buy them a new one. So essentially, we shared it, but essentially, we just got it.
They bought it to us and never asked for it back.
And we just maintained it and didn't charge them, like, we paid to maintain it, and then we give it back, and then they can resell it or auction it or use it or whatever, and they get those benefits.
Just curious whether that was-
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Any questions, quick?
I just wanted to say, make a statement. I appreciate the peek into the future because if you know where you're going, you can actually get there, and it gives me great confidence to know that, you know, I live in a community that constantly is looking at where we're going and, you know, and have a staff that allows us to have a stab at getting there. So hats off to you guys.
Yeah, I agree.
And it is, it is great to know that we are anticipating getting rid of all those pipes that you hear so many terrible things about that. It's in our long-range plan. I really appreciate that, too.
Am I right?
Thank you so much for the presentation. To what Trustee Garner said, though, it's true that there might be some tough decisions coming up to get to that future replacement plan, and that's barring the economy doing anything naughty. So, thanks.
Thank you. Tremendous details. I think there's key points I've taken on each of yours I'm pretty excited about. There's, you can't really consider them trade-offs, they're really terrific. Couple questions, so you don't have to answer it now, but when I think of our water rate increase, I wonder which of our accounts are the highest users of water and are those commercial and therefore the increase is at, is commercial and residential, correct?
Oh, yeah, we have, yeah, one flat rate.
All right. I just didn't know of like Six Flags or gurney mills that have some systems in place are less impacted by the increase and therefore it's trickling more towards the residents.
No, we don't have a graduated rate where, you know, the more you use, the lower the rate, we don't have that. It's flat for everybody.
So that was one. So let's see, DC gone. I love the idea of the storage container, whether we get to go that way or not, for your homicide cars. What it made me think about is which department would be utilizing the land that we trade swapped for the forest preserve that's north of the Public Works. Would it be there that you'd be thinking of it? So, sorry, I kind of flip-flopped there.
So the area that's being proposed is our land, yes. And we obtained that, the additional part further north and west from the forest preserve. So now it's all ours.
And would that be potentially where the additional space would be for the containers or whatever?
It wouldn't be as close to the railroad tracks. We'd keep it further interior to our property, kind of where we put logs and things like that, that we then burn later on in time.
That's exciting.
It has to be close enough so we can have video and any alarm systems on it.
All right.
Can I just add, so is that going to then require Public Works to secure the gate onto the property then?
No. So the, the storage containers themselves would, would be locked, and then we'd work with IS for some type of an alarm system for them. And then the cameras that they have in the back of the building will also monitor them. So we won't need to secure the gates.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
No problem. I just wanted to say that the resident, you know, we know we deal with traffic through gurneys, so it's nice to, David, to your point, that we are able to acknowledge and give the intersection some walkability, bikeability between Gauges Lake and Route 21. That's a really great plus for our residents. And I think maybe just the last one is I'll be looking forward to our innovative ideas on finding money. Thanks.
Justice Russ?
I also want to say thank you. Very interesting. One question I have, piggybacking off of that of finding money, there are some grants available and Representative Brad Snyder often can come up with, and you see it in all other communities that he has been able to. I wonder if showing that graph and showing what's happening, that there is going to be a need because often we hear that we don't have that need where other communities do, and possibly there might be some, some avenue there of looking.
You can mention Fuller Road, go ahead.
Yeah, so we currently have a, an application into Mr. Snyder's office, Congressman Snyder's office, for rebuilding Fuller Road from Grand Avenue up to Stern School. So that's, I think, a $2 million grant that we're looking for from them. And we're also repurposing our traffic signal grant for Fire Station Number Three, sorry, John, that we were never able to get the permits for, to fund a water main project that we did last year. So we are hopefully going to get those monies allocated to the $2 and a 3/4 of a million dollars to a project that we, you know, already completed.
Thanks. I just reaffirm what you said, David. I think that our, all of our intentions, we might all be gone, and the people that come up behind us, our children and grandchildren, are going to have to use what we're using. So I appreciate the foresight, and I'm not interested in passing on a worn-out facility or village to somebody else and just say, well, it's not my job. It is our job, so I appreciate the foresight.
And I do want to give credit where credit's due. Nick Leach is the one who put this presentation together and, you know, did the majority of the legwork on this. Unfortunately, he was out of town with a family death this weekend, so I stepped in, but Nick is the one who is the meat and potatoes behind this, so thanks to him.
Thanks for your efforts. It's well done, well done, well done.
Yeah, so, yeah, thank Dave for stepping in for Nick, and then Brian jumped in for Ryan. So Ryan Nelson was not feeling well, I told him to stay away, so the rest of us continue to feel well. So I would just point out last thing, up on Brian's schedule there, so week of February 24th, the Village Board meeting, so that's kind of what we're shooting for, for the one-on-ones with the trustees, maybe the week before that. If I can push Brian, we can get the budget book done before, so trustees, trustee candidate, bring them in, review the budget before we get to the first budget hearing workshop, which is March 3rd, I believe, 5:30 start. So I'll, either myself or Selena will be reaching out to you here in the near future just to get a date around that mid to end of February on your calendar, so. In the meantime, if anything comes up, as you review this, let us know.
All right. Thank you very much, everybody. Onto, there's no old business, one item on the new business. Approval of ordinance 2025.
Zero one.
Authorizing the execution of a second amendment to the redevelopment agreement with Red Crown Investment LLC, 141 for property located at 4821 and 4885 Grand Avenue, Gurnee, Illinois. Pat?
Sure. So you remember, we approved this redevelopment agreement for the Avalon and BP at Grandin 21 back in July of 2023. So it's going to be a complete reconstruction of the site. Last year, we had a first amendment to the agreement, extended a couple of timelines in there as they continued to work with the property owner to the south, and then IDOT on access and curb cuts. Got the Avalon tore down since that time, so that was nice to see some progress out there. Hoping to get started in the spring with construction out there, but again, they're waiting on IDOT for that permitting. But as they work to finalize the agreement with primos to the south on the property line, so remember, the property line was kind of zigzagged between the two properties, they're working on straightening those out, swapping some properties between the owners on the north and south. That's been pretty much finalized now, and there is a need for some additional fill, grading, and pavement to be done that will benefit the primo property. So in relation to that, Graham came back to us, asked if we would be willing to allocate some additional stormwater credits to them. We allocated some with the original agreement. Remember, we received these when we moved the DQ and the hair salon from the floodplain, those credits came to the village. We don't have any use for the credits, we have them available. It'll help facilitate the redevelopment of the site, so it's 8,400 cubic feet of stormwater credits. I asked David to put a monetary value on that, it's about $10,000 is what we estimate them to be worth. So Graham has requested that additional 8,400 stormwater, or cubic feet of stormwater credits to allow this fill, grading, pavement as relates to straightening out the property line. So that's what this second amendment does, there was no other changes to the agreement.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion?
Motion by Trustee O'Brien.
Second.
Second by Trustee Thorsonson. Any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Thorsonson.
Yes.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ballmas.
Aye.
Bye-bye.
Motion carries. Onto the last item, public comment. If anybody would like to step up to the microphone, state your name. There being none, the floor is closed. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion by Trustee Garner, second by Trustee Ballmas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.